I mostly want to mention the maintenance team of Bobby and R3 and Victor and Rob and what they've been doing behind the scenes for several months, that's just fabulous. It changes every day. They've been on top of the fires. They've been on top of construction going on. They've been putting fences up. They've been keeping kids safe. They got our preschool running. They are making sure we have all the supplies we need for when children return to school. They are sanitizing the classrooms in all of the facilities on a daily basis, several times a day. And I think they've been phenomenal and I think that they deserve special recognition.
Great. Bravo. Yes, thank you so much.
I want to also add to that the Transportation Department that's kicked in a few extra people that would help us to get it done.
Right. And delivering meals and everything.
Yeah, for next month.
Good to be a part of the team.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And I also want to recognize Erica Mendoza. I don't know if everybody's met Erica. She and me have been working daily since March when everybody went home and heard about COVID. They never went home. They've, every day, they've supplied meals to the community at large. They've been serving meals at school sites. They are serving meals at several apartment complexes in town. They go to homes and serve meals if people don't have transportation. They're currently providing meals at the city for our ACES program. We're keeping the preschool going. They have been extremely busy and it's been very difficult and they've done a fantastic job. And I wanted them to be recognized as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that great support and any of my staff. You know, they're awesome and they're always on top of everything and that's important as well. Man is always helping us as well. So yeah, it's a great team.
Good. Glad to hear that. I mean, all of you, the maintenance group, the Transportation Group, the Food Service Group have been amazing. Truly, truly amazing. And in particular, that food service in supporting our entire community throughout this whole craziness is, is just, it's amazing. Thank you.
So much. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. You've done us very, very proud.
Thank you.
Such a bummer to not be doing this in person.
I know, I know. I really appreciate you.
Like sending gratitude vibes.
Exactly.
Through the internet, yeah.
Yes, totally.
You guys are truly the cement, the glue that holds the district together. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Takes a big team to keep this going.
Yes.
Well, and you guys do a such great attitude. There's always a positive word and an encouraging smile. It's never begrudgingly. So we recognize that as well. So thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your dog just made an appearance there.
I know, I saw that. I shut the door and they bark. I let them in and I don't know what to do.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to the next item, yes, to celebrating our success and the wonderful HHS FFA program. So this is, who's gonna be doing this?
I believe it's Erin.
Erin, yes, it is Erin. Thank you.
Yeah, yes and no. I'm gonna play a small role in this in that I just want our, you know, the appreciation from the entire district. The Hillsburg Agricultural Program and FFA is, is one of the strongest things we've got going on in Hillsburg. And the dedication of the teachers and the students is phenomenal. You know, I watch them on social media. If you guys, they have a great social media presence, whoever's doing that, thank you. It keeps me connected to what you guys are doing even in the summer. And really want to turn this over to Principal Halliday to introduce our teachers and give a little bit more background. But I just wanted to say thank you and I'm just so proud to be a part of, you know, a little itty bitty part and mostly just stand on the side and kind of cheer you guys along while you do the good work that you do. So Principal Halliday, I know you're here.
Well, good evening, everybody, and it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Dale and Ms. Hunt and our FFA students and spectacular representation of our program. I can't be more proud of the students. I can't be more proud of the program. And just want to remind everybody that this is a real part of our school. And our students are involved in this program than any other aspect of our school. And it really speaks highly to our tradition, our heritage, our agricultural roots. And transferring that to our young students is a real pleasure that we get to experience. And I can't speak more highly of Ms. Hunt and Ms. Dale for continuing to steward this program in positive directions. So no further ado, I would like to introduce Ms. Hunt and Ms. Dale and our presentation.
We don't really have a presentation, so we're gonna let the kids do it. That's kind of how we roll. So Vivian's gonna actually start, but you'll hear from three different students tonight.
Well, hello, everyone. I would like to thank you for giving us this great opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Viviana Magdaleno and I am the chapter president for our chapter. So basically, our eight-chapter officers were elected via Google Form this year and were announced at our virtual banquet in June. Claire and Emerson have also been members of this chapter for about three years now. And they have done some amazing things that they will talk to you a little bit more about. Our members have the opportunity to compete in many events like speaking competitions, CDEs, and proficiencies. As well as competitions, our chapter also has monthly FFA meetings, which unfortunately we couldn't be able to do in school, but through Zoom, we have, actually today, we have our first meeting. So we'll see how that turns out. And we really encourage our members to step out of their comfort zone and try new things that will really help them out in the long run. I say that because with, I mean, without FFA, I honestly don't know where I would, what I would be doing right now. But that is pretty much what I am going to say. And now I will hand it off to Emerson.
Hi, I'm Emerson. I'm gonna be talking about the proficiency awards that Claire and I did in. So Claire and I both won a state proficiency in the springtime of proficiency. Award honors members who have developed skills through their SAE, which is a supervised agricultural experience that all FFA kids participate in. And they develop skills that they can apply to future careers. In the state, there are 53 areas students can compete in, with our chapter winning two of these areas in 2020. My proficiency was in the area agri-science plant system and Claire's was in poultry production. I received gold at national competition, which signifies that I was in the top 10 of the nation.
Wow.
Excellent.
As well as acknowledging the work and achievements that our members do, our organization tries to acknowledge the work that comes in from people outside of the organization and the support that they give. That includes naming a state star counselor, which this year was our very own Mr. Flores. I got to be a part of the application process for that and it's so exciting to see him being honored at the state level for all the work that he does to support us. Additionally, this year, Ellie Kay and myself won for our agri-science pro, wow, our agri-science project at the state level. Our agri-science projects are something that we all do in our ag classes and they're a research project and paper that's written like a college research paper would be. And you have the opportunity to enter them to compete at the state level in one of six different divisions. Ours here won for the state. Thank you guys so much for giving us the opportunity to talk about what we've been doing because none of what we do is possible without the support that we get from our administration and from all of you guys. So it's always exciting to be able to let you know a little bit of what we've been up to, especially since Corona. And we've kept up doing a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Terrific.
Excellent.
We can represent Hillsburg. Good job, guys. All of you.
Yes. Can I also, just as an aside, if you are unmuted and you have noises happening in the background, if you could please mute your, your microphone because it can be very distracting while we're trying to listen to the speaker. So I just sort of little reminder there. But that was excellent. Thank you. I really do appreciate the update for all the things that have been happening kind of since March. It always feels like nothing's been happening, but that is certainly not the case with the FFA group for sure. So thank you.
Thank you guys so much. We're gonna leave and get to our first FFA meeting of the year.
Thank you.
Bye.
Congratulations. Excellent.
Excellent.
Dang.
Okay, I think we're on to the consent agenda. Back to the beginning here. Let's just make sure I haven't forgotten anything. Oh, any, I guess at this point, any public comments on non-agenda items? Now would be the time. Please send a chat to Karen Mendoza and with any comments. Actually, now would be a great time to send a comment, a chat to Karen if you have a comment on non-agenda or agenda items so that when it comes to that agenda item, we are ready to have you speak, you know, without any delay. So any comments on non-agenda items, Karen? Oh, you're muted. And it doesn't look like it, judging by the look on your.
I'm sorry. No, we do not have any public comments. Sorry.
And if something trickles in, just let me know and we'll make time because we know there's delays and such here in Zoom. And again, if you have a comment on an agenda item, ideally get it to Karen before that agenda item or as it's beginning so we don't miss you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Any comments or concerns about the items on the consent agenda? And if not, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Judy. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimously approved. Okay, on to the regular agenda items. 12-1 High School Summer Credit Recovery Program, and this will be Erin.
Yeah, again, I'm gonna just start us off here and then turn it over to the people who do the real work. This was originally slotted to present to you guys back in August, but we've had really busy board meetings. And I thank Ms. Marks and the teachers and other support staff that participated. In my opinion, the best summer school that we've had since I've been a part of HUSD for a number of reasons. The first, it was the most credits were earned since I've been around. And Ms. Mark says a beautiful chart that she's gonna show you. And not only were the most credits earned, but they were earned through distance learning, right? We did this during a pandemic over summer. So Ms. Mark's leadership and the hard work of our teachers and support staff to make this happen and keep the learning through the summer, I could not be more pleased, even if it was a regular school year, that they did this all through remote. Had a lot of cool systems worked out that we're gonna learn from and continue on, no matter what happens in the future through summer school. So I'm gonna turn this over to our summer school principal, Ms. Marks, and let her guide you through the presentation.
That was awfully sweet of you, Erin. Thank you so much. I just want you to know that I really have to say it was a collaboration between an incredible staff. They have a well-oiled machine. They developed some really great curriculum, really reached out to the students. And we utilized all of our systems that we already had in place. And I'm gonna kind of go over that for you right now. I just wanted to say that if it wasn't for the board and it wasn't for Erin taking a chance on this crew, we wouldn't have been as successful. So I want to say thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to really support our students. The overview of the program, I think, is gonna be important so you can see how it differs from what we've done in the past. And it was distance learning. We learned a lot in the summer and then were able to share with our colleagues when we got into the distance learning in the fall. And the data really supported everything that we did. We were really pleased with it. And then the student surveys, the students really gave us some interesting information. And Mrs. Dale, Mrs. Dale was the one who helped me get the surveys out to the students. And we got some interesting information. So Karen, would you mind going to the next slide? So how this differed from previous years is that it was two sessions. We did start in the spring. I went through and identified students, transcript evaluated. I did get some help from the counselors, but I thoroughly went through, made individual calls to parents, both in Spanish and English, and pushed to enroll the students into courses. Once we got final grades, then after grades were posted for the semester, we were able to break them up into three-week-long sessions, first semester, second semester, June 9th through the 25th, and then the 29th through July 17th. Summer school ran from 9:00 to noon, Monday through Friday, except on holidays. And the teachers were there. They started at 8:00 and sometimes they linger until 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon with me. But we were, we were there full-time working with the students. Karen, next slide. So it was distance learning completely, but we utilized our teachers. And that's a big difference from previous years. In the past, they've had one instructor, but they totally used the Edmentum/Plato platform. We did have daily attendance, which was required. You had three days of absence and then it was, we are gonna have to drop you if you're not attending and/or you're not participating. So just coming and sitting in class is not gonna get you the credits that you need. You must participate. Next slide. One of the biggest support systems that we had was utilizing our ARISE data system. It allowed us to keep track of grades and attendance, daily attendance. Our teachers had their students loaded into their grade books. They were loaded into their PSL pages. They were loaded in for grades. Everything just automatically went into our regular systems. So we were able to have live information and talk to the parents and say, nope, go into your ARISE grade book. You can see how your student's participating and we could utilize it when speaking to parents. We also could look at the transcripts because we had our registrar uploading grades for us. Karen, next system. There you go. Our staff members. We were really blessed with having a bilingual secretary, although she was only two hours a day. In those two hours, she was on the phone and she didn't miss a beat. We waited for about a half an hour for teachers to get their attendance in and then she just started calling home. Every day, we were on it. If students weren't in the Zooms, we called and said, we really need your help, parents. Could you get the student in the Zoom for us? She made home deliveries of packets. So we had supply packets, materials packets. And if the parents or student couldn't come in, she was taking them to the parents. Next slide. Yeah, that's impressive. Paloma Portillo Sasha is one of our current pairs as well and a very seasoned employee. And she's been working with mostly our special ed students, but here she worked with our gen ed students. She would zoom in regularly into the classroom with the teachers and the students and then go into a breakout room when a student needed more one-on-one. She worked individually with them outside of the normal class day if need be. She made phone calls, emails to those struggling students who weren't checking in on a regular basis, especially those who found it difficult due to some emotional issues. They didn't want to have their camera on or they felt uncomfortable in that classroom setting. She was able to work with them on a one-on-one. She was in constant contact with parents, in constant contact with myself and the teachers. And she was very effective at getting students engaged again. Next slide. So here are our four incredible instructors. We had Jamie Atwood, who handled all of our integrated Math 1. She actually spent quite a bit of time developing the curriculum for this class that was highly specialized just to identify what are the five main points, strategies, skills that a student needs to move on to IM2. And she did that and the students learned by leaps and bounds and were really grateful to her. Josh Kavanaugh, he managed our Edmentum courseware platform. And so he, you know, he, the whole gamut from PE all the way to world history is what he was covering with the students. Riley Dale, which I'm sorry, she got married after I made my PowerPoint, was our ag bio teacher. And she did some really incredible things by allowing the students to get packets of materials that they would need so that they could grow things and, and really do that project-based learning. And then Dennis Jones was kind enough to do a combo class for us. He had English 9 and English 10 and really was able to do some incredible things in his class as well. Sent large packets home, books home, and did some great breakout room and group projects with the students as well. Next slide. So what it looked like in the classroom every day was that they were doing project-based learning. And you can kind of see the examples on the side of what students were doing at home. They had that direct instruction. So at the beginning, you take attendance. You get some direct instruction for about maybe 45 minutes. Students would do their little breakout groups. They'd work on projects, collaborate. And then they'd come back together and do some share out. So it was varied. And then we also had the Edmentum platform where students were working on various courses and they worked at their own pace. Next slide, Karen. So this is an example, as you can see, of students actually in the Zoom. Some of them showing what they're working on at home in their projects, how they're displaying things for their teachers. Some of them had whiteboards where they would write the answers to questions and show them. They all had access to breakout rooms in Zoom, PSL pages, where they knew where they could find all the prompts, how they would upload any handwritten work that they did. They used all forms of technology. If they needed to use their phone, they would take a photo of it, make a PDF, or take a picture, which is the JPEG, upload that work to the teacher. So there were a variety of ways that they could submit their work, even as low-tech as I'm just gonna email something to my teacher, but they used every form of technology. Karen, next slide. So the outcome and what the end result that the data showed was that utilizing the systems that we have and really making those personal phone calls, we increased the number of seats that we had. So we were able to get about 112 seats. That's 112 different courses that were made up this summer. It could, it was probably about 60 students total and they might have made up one to two or three courses during that time period. But you see, the important part is the green part of this graph. And that's last year, they were under 40% of completion, of actually completing the class that they enrolled in. Our completion rate was almost at 80%. And I think that I want to attribute that to the fact that we utilized all of the structures that we have in place. We were a highly motivated group, very like-minded. Everyone was in communication on a regular basis and we did not let the students get away from us. We made sure we were in contact with parents. We made sure that we were in constant contact with the students. And there was always open dialogue between the staff and the office staff. And, and I just feel it was a great crew and that's why it was so successful. There was another group of, of individuals, you know, that I want to, I think, and that was, at the very end, I have them on there. And it's John Cameron and Linda, Cameron, I'm sorry, Linda Cameron and Jody Pruitt, who really did such a great job of getting all of our current systems into place for us. They're experts in ARISE, they're experts in Edmentum, and they really made everything work for us. Linda and Jody were not on duty. They came in and worked for us when they weren't on duty, which I'm really grateful to them that they came in and did that. So it wouldn't have worked if they hadn't done that. I think the end result is students' responses. So when you look at the survey, you see that the student, we asked them both at the end of first semester and second semester. And some students came for both semesters. And some of the ones that, the responses that came out to me was that my teacher was super nice and helpful. The, they liked interacting, talking, and the advice that they got from their teachers. So I think at this point, they were really starved for having those interactions. And, and I think our teachers were as well. And that's why we were all really happy that people wanted to be together. The next slide, Karen, I think had something on, I thought it was funny when the student said, I learned a ton about Theodore Roosevelt. And I also liked the one that I, I learned about graphing. And I'm happy about that. Like, I've never heard a student say I'm happy about learning to graph. So I think that these were really important times for the students. A lot of these students are now on track to graduate and some of them are eligible for college admissions, A through G eligible now. So I just want to say, and Karen, I do have the last slide, I think, where I have my, my three superstars there who really came in and are experts in the, you know, doing the transcripts, working in ARISE and doing all those great things for us. And if it wasn't for them helping to set everything up in the systems, it wouldn't have moved so smoothly. So I'm really grateful to them for stepping in and helping us out. Any questions?
No questions.
One thing I want to say while you formulate your questions and think about it, and this is, this is kind of taking it to the next step, is that because of the good work that the staff did over the summer, we felt much more ready to launch distance learning as a school district. This was a nice test and trial. You know, we had over 60 students enrolled, but it was manageable and we had teachers who were willing to share their learnings with their staff. So the staff that you saw there actually led a lot of the distance learning professional development in August for their fellow high school teachers. So they took their tips, their tricks, their learnings that they had implemented over the six weeks of summer and said, all right, guys, this is how we can do this as an entire high school as we launch distance learning. So not only was it successful, this summer school, kids and those teachers, but their learnings have transitioned us into what we're able to do now. And again, is, I think, a big reason why we've so quickly have been able to run as, as far and as fast as we have as a district, in particular, at the high school level. So I just wanted to put that little plug in there.
Did I say something? First of all, I'm overwhelmed with being impressed in my little hovel here. Absolutely dynamite. I mean, a whole team effort, et cetera, and the fact that the, the results of where the kids came out and are able to go, I mean, that's again, impressive. And I'm hoping, as you said, that these educators are able to help their peers. And I'm hoping that somehow we can use them to continue that. I understand initially, here's how you do it, guys, but does it make sense, I'm just asking, to see that, hey, maybe they can check in with people, you know, all the way kindergarten through high school? Because I know the administrative part of distance learning, I'm beginning to understand, is sort of a pain in the ankle. And, you know, is it possible to, you know, give them a stipend or whatever to say, hey, I'm, I'm an expert. This is, this is how you do it. I can show you a better way. Just a thought. But again, I go back to outstanding, I'm impressed. Ms. Marks, as the leader of this, congratulations and congratulations to the whole team.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Not, just looking at these really great outcomes. Is this a model that we would be looking at even post-COVID?
Yes, absolutely. Undoubtedly. Yeah, yeah. Going back to having, as Ms. Mark said, our teachers teaching courses and not just leading online instruction. And, you know, she intimated a little bit, but this is more expensive, right? Not having a single teacher just basically running a learning, an online learning lab, but having our teachers teach. But it was time, both fiscally and just in terms of what we needed to do to take care of our kids. So I genuinely hope that we can continue to provide our own teachers doing some. So I, I genuinely hope that we can continue to provide our own teachers doing summer school.
I just want to thank you, Connie, for making those, you know, those calls to families and making sure that they were, you know, on the, on their computers and ready to go, because we can't get them there. We can't expose them to the amazing opportunities. So just the fact that we were able to get so many more students there is just, I'm so excited about that, and I just want to thank you for that, and the counselors. And, yeah, and I agree with Donna. It's like, how can we, you know, have those teachers share their expertise and their success? And, and, you know, one of the things that stood out to me is how engaging the students felt that it was. And so how do we make sure that the, our learning now is just as captivating and engaging so that we can have those students in the seat and learning? So thank you all for all of your work with that. That's amazing.
Yeah, I just want to add, add to that, too. I, I concur with everything that the other trustees have said. I think it was neat how we had a combination of newer teachers to our district and veteran teachers that were, and really an A-team, coming in to really make summer school, not like, you know, the movie Summer School, where everyone, you know what I'm saying? But really that they embraced the opportunity that they had, and I think made it, I don't know, can you, can summer school be fun, but to make summer school really engaging for those kids. And I think sometimes, I think that's a group of students that don't always feel included and engaged. And it's quite evident that the hearts of the teachers and the administrator, Ms. Marks, you were in it for those kids. Like, it wasn't just, let's just put on a great program, but let's, we've got great kids, let's make it really awesome for them. So I really, really appreciate, appreciate teachers giving up their summers to make this not just summer school, but to make it so amazing. And not to put down the summer school that's been offered before. I think anytime you can help students have credit recovery, it's something, it's important to do, but the fact that we did it in such an amazing way, and Erin, your willingness to see how we could make that happen, I really, really appreciate that. And I, I'm excited, I'm excited for next summer and summer school. So thank you. Thank you all.
So I, I would like to just say that I'm thinking about these kids who were able to recover units to just what that must do to them, about how they feel about themselves as students. And for them to, you know, with the phone calls, with the interaction with the parents, and the interaction with the kids, for them to feel that they're not just wallpaper, or they're not just the forgotten, forgotten kids. And I think that the other thing that really impresses me is that these teachers modeled making this very, very difficult time really work, utilizing, you know, projects, utilizing that, that interaction. And I think that that's one of the things that we need to be striving for from pre, from TK, Transitional Kindergarten, on up, for those kids to feel connected and that somebody really cares about them. And anyway, I, thanks. It was terrific. Terrific results, but I really like the fact that those kids must be feeling good about themselves, kids that don't often feel good about themselves.
But any final words, Ms. Marks?
I, I agree with everything that all of you said, and I just want to say one more time, if it was not for this incredible crew, I don't think that we would have been so successful. We would have made it through. But it really was the dynamics of this particular group really wanting to make this work, and everybody pitching in. And so I am forever grateful, and I want to tell you all that I really appreciate you taking a chance on me and allowing me this opportunity to really show you how this could work. And I'm grateful that you allowed me to do this because I knew that the kids would be successful. And I'm so happy because, you know, Judy, you said it, if these kids feel so good when they complete that and they know they're back on track. So I'm thrilled. And Erin, thank you a million. I'm, I'm happy, really happy. So thank you all.
Let me just say, Ms. Marks, it wasn't, we weren't taking a chance. We knew.
Well, and we need to make sure as a board that we're supporting whatever it would take to replicate this again next year in whatever phase of learning we're in next summer.
And in what we're doing right now. I mean, those teachers were really modeling what should be happening in all our classrooms right now. So I love the fact that they're working with other members of their staff and providing that kind of, that interaction between teachers, talking about, you know, giving teachers ideas about how they can do that. That's very rich. It's the best way to learn.
So thank you to everyone involved with the program. Any other comments, questions?
I, I do have one comment, and that would be from Ally Alcazar. And Ally, if you want to unmute. Yeah, there you go.
Hello, all. Just kudos to our credit recovery team this summer. I wasn't a part of it. I was, spent my summer doing other things, planning, but it is a good reminder of how collaboration can work really effectively in our model that we are doing this fall. I can say at the elementary level, we are really starting to see a lot of student engagement and creating those deeper connections even in this format. And I'm happy to say that it seems like it's working with those students that are at most risk, including our special ed students. So just kudos to them for being models and continuing the collaboration. But, you know, this can work if we, if we talk to each other. So we just want the board to keep that in mind when they're making decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you. That was, yeah, excellent. And again, appreciate all the effort by all the parties involved to make that happen this summer. Shall we move on to item 121B, the Marcy Basara Academy Big Picture Learning?
Yeah, this is in the same vein, and again, we have this slotted for earlier in the year, but we've had to put it off. So we wish this would have come to you back when we had it originally scheduled, but we've had a lot of stuff to deal with. So my apology is that you guys are getting this later than we would have, have liked. So I'll just start with that. In the same vein, this is about supporting some of our neediest students, some of our most underserved students. And as Carlos Acosta and Curtis Hagedorn shared with us, and we'll learn more about who they are, students that we are indebted to, and, and starting to think about, not at-risk kids, but how we, as a society, are indebted to some of our, our students. So Marcy Basara Academy is our alternative ed high school. Bill Halliday is our principal, and he and I are going to co-present here. A little reminder that Big Picture Learning is something that we've been looking at for, for now about two, a little over two years. Most of the trustees have gone on visits to see Big Picture and other school districts in action. What we have for you tonight is the Learning Support and Implementation Contract. We work with the Big Picture Organization to receive coaching support. They work on, normally work on the ground with us. A lot of Zooming happening with Lauren, our coach. Real quick, and I'm sure Bill will get into this when, when he starts to talk, but we are having a great year in Marcy Basara Academy. We are starting to see the seeds that we planted in the last eighteen months sprout. We have a new instructor who moved here from Haley, Idaho, to be with us. He is a Big Picture veteran. He has worked for the Big Picture Learning Organization at another school in Idaho, along with Josh Kavanaugh. And you saw Josh, he's part-time with Marcy Basara Academy, and he ran the online, the online coursework over the summer. So Tor Top is our new teacher, and Josh Kavanaugh are really starting to rock and roll in this model, even in distance learning. So I'm going to let Bill give it a little bit of meat and, and kind of do what he does best in storytelling, and kind of help us understand why this contract is so important for you all to, to approve tonight.
Okay, thank you, Erin. And I'm really pleased to talk about this tonight, and really pleased that all our board members had the opportunity to visit a Big Picture school in, in the before times. You were able to see firsthand the type of model that really makes a difference in these students' lives. And again, just a reminder, this is a very much an interest-based learning endeavor that we're taking on, that the students are guiding their own plan, they're guiding their own structure of, frankly, how they're going to earn credits and what they're going to do the last two years of high school, and what they're going to do after high school. As you know, my background as a teacher and then as an administrator began exclusively in alternative education. And I've seen very successful models, and I've seen very unsuccessful models to reach kids that are disenfranchised from a traditional education environment. But I do have to say, after all these years, it is creeping towards thirty now. This is the best model for reaching kids' hearts and heads who are looking for an alternative way through high school. And I'm, I'll try not to gush too much, but I couldn't be more excited about anything that's going on in our schools right now than what's going on with Big Picture. And we have this great instructional combination with Tor and with Josh. Tor Top and, and Josh Kavanaugh were, Tor is a veteran of Big Picture Learning. He comes with an alternative mind and heart. He has created these schools very successfully, and he's implemented these in two locations in America. Now we're blessed enough to have him take a risk and come all the way out to Sonoma County and do it for us also. And then we have a young teacher who's one of the most talented young teachers I've ever seen, and Josh Kavanaugh, partnering with him to get, to get the ball rolling. A little bit of the change that is very clear from the start is that our students, even in distance learning, and I'm going to go back to what Connie shared with you about the great summer school program that she facilitated, our students are actually more engaged now in Big Picture Learning, in Marcy Basara, in distance learning than they were last year when we had person-to-person instruction. Our attendance rates have gone up, our engagement rates have gone up, and just the dialogue about goals and success and planning with our students has taken on a completely different tenor this year. The next step, and how this really relates to the Akos Educational Partnership, is our teachers and with the students' support really believe that social justice and community awareness is a pathway that they want to take as a school, as a school team. And they do want to partner with these gentlemen and not just talk about fulfilling some community service, but really looking in-depth at social justice issues in our local community and the broader community. And as all of you who know, working with students who are not connected to school, that's a huge step for them to take, to say that I'm not just here for myself, that I'm here for something greater and broader than my experience running through high schools. So again, I could, I could go on and on and on about this. And I really look forward to continuing to come back to the board and talk about what progress we're making. As I've said with Erin before, and in my, my private conversations with board members, we'd really like this almost to be a quick monthly update if the board's so pleased, so we could talk about our progress.
So the contract that you have before you tonight assures a partnership with the Big Picture Learning Organization so we can use their decades-long experience in helping schools implement this model. It gives us a one-on-one coach that has really become an integral part of our team. He feels, he feels like he's a hound at this point. He also works with the other Big Picture Learning districts in our region and is very committed to creating a community of practice between the schools that are in our region. Yucaya, Windsor, most notably, here in our, in our backyard. And there's a couple other schools also up in, one in Fort Bragg, another in Sacramento, and another in Oakland, where the, the region could, could, could grow as we kind of get our feet under us. So any questions from the board before we ask for approval of this contract?
Good stuff.
I am so excited that we are doing this. And that you got these people to pull it off. I, I mean, when we went last, well, it was last fall. I don't know, it was a long time ago. You know, I just wanted to take those two guys and, and bring them to Hillsburg, but you, you got people for us. That's great. I'm very excited.
Yeah, and I give kudos to, to Principal Halliday for just being patient, right? Education is so much about the getting good people and, and doing good hiring. And, you know, I was fluttering about and like, we got to do this. And he just worked with Lauren and the wider Big Picture Network and, you know, be patient and it will come. And I don't, you know, normally, again, I would say, you guys got to go do a walkthrough. You got to go meet Tor Top, see Josh Kavanaugh in action with these kids. It's a little harder through Zoom. But you, you will meet these gentlemen, and you will see their infectious energy and what they're doing for our kids. And not only for their education, but just really, as, as Principal Halliday mentioned, looking at this through a social justice lens like we never have before. They, it's, it's really inspiring what, what they're going to do with these kids.
It's very exciting.
Yeah, I, I think it's amazing that we have, our little Hillsburg has such an amazing program. I mean, Erin and Judy and I were, and with Principal Halliday, went up to the Sacramento area. And I think what you said, Erin, and even Bill, it's, it's the difference between just educating kids and, and affecting lives. I mean, these, these kids just bring something different to the table when they're in the classroom. And it's just so exciting to have such a great leader at that, on that campus, a gentleman with such experience. And Josh and his energy and just who he is, I mean, he's just, I sat next to him at a training last year, just had met him, and I was just so excited just to be sitting next to him, because he just has that enthusiasm. And to have those young, you know, a young teacher under, like you said, a veteran leader, and Mr. Halliday with his experience in alt ed, it's just, it's one of those things where you see the clouds parting and the sun beginning to shine. This might be one of my favorite meetings tonight with summer school and Big Picture Learning. It's just so, so encouraging. And maybe we're just a little starved for, you know, some, some such great news. It just in our, our climate right now, not our school district, but just where we are as people. It's so exciting to see lives being touched like this. So thank you. I wish we could go see it, but the day will come.
Agreed, agreed.
All right, it pleases the board.
Comment, or do I have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Yay.
Yeah, yay. One, one thing that I think is important, I, I should have said, is that we utilize Title I funds for those as a restricted dollars that must be used for low-income students. So we get an allocation of Title I money that has to be used for Marcy Basara Academy. So this is not general fund dollars. These are dollars that really are intended to serve low-income population, of which more than ninety percent of the students who attend Marcy Basara are, are, meet that category. So it, it's, I think, a really good use of our Title I funds to, to support this contract, so. How many students do we have, Erin, at this time in the program, and is there a chance to grow? What, what is kind of the? Yeah, so there's, there's twenty-five today, or yesterday, the last time, as Marks gave me some numbers. The, the, the growth is really about staffing more than anything. You know, I'll be completely honest that we, we'd like to have higher levels of staffing. We're night, right now at a one-point-four, so Mr. Tor Top is full-time, Mr. Kavanaugh is a point-four allocated. We, we'd like to get some more staffing in there, possibly a pair of professional and/or more teaching staff. But, you know, starting, starting slow here, we needed to get a look at our budget. You know, when we were making staffing allocations, that's what we had to give at the time. So I think there are certainly more students that can be well-served through this program, particularly.
That was my next question. Do we have students that really are almost, you know, needing to be, or maybe would be a better fit, I shouldn't say needing to be, but fit better in maybe the Big Picture Learning program?
Yeah, I would let, I would let Bill and Ms. Marks answer that, but my, my, my armchair is, is yes.
And is, I'm, I'm always looking at like, okay, the programmatically, is there something that we could take away and something that we can use in all of our classrooms? Like, I keep thinking, gosh, this is so engaging. People are loving this. I haven't seen it. I haven't had the opportunity to see it. But I've heard nothing but good about this program. I'm wondering, how are we, how are we inviting our general ed teachers to, or what's happening there to take away some nuggets and implement in their own classrooms? I'm wondering, how are we, how are we inviting our general ed teachers to, or what's happening there to take away some nuggets and implement in their own classrooms?
You know, it's, it's all part of the process. And I, I'll answer the first question. Yes, Ms. Marks and I believe, and Erin believe we would, we'd have more students than twenty-five that would be successful in this program. And we, we will probably be coming back asking for staffing increases so we can, we can serve more students. Some of the big, long-term big picture schools began like we began, trying to not follow a cookie cutter, but design a program that's built for your individual community needs. And they started as credit recovery, like Marcy's been for years and years, which is exclusively serving students who are behind in credits. But they've grown to be schools that serve that need, but also serves students' needs who are not behind in credit, but want to take a non-traditional pathway in school. And so that, you know, a year, two years from now, that's really kind of the model we want to see. Yes, we'll help you and support you to get towards your diploma, but also if you're not looking to be A through G or if you're just looking to try a different pathway through high school and be successful post-high school, this is, this is an option for you too.
Very good.
Bet you'll have a lot of takers, Mr. Holiday.
We could. I mean, we're, we're in a good spot, Mike. We have amazing offerings at Hillsburg High School for, for all kids. And so it's, it's not one program versus the other. It's just what's, what's the best fit for students?
Yet another good one. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, thank you. Okay, to the next topic, Acosta Educational Partnership, and this is also Erin.
Yeah, so this is just informational discussion. We're not asking you to take action tonight. We have started a new relationship with the Acosta Educational Partnership. I know many of you were able to hear their keynote address that they gave during our district kickoff day with all two hundred employees via Zoom. That was an experience. And shout out to Karen and Colin Dowling, our IT, who figured out how to get a guy who was in Arizona, a guy who was in Napa, and two hundred of our employees on Zoom altogether with PowerPoint and breakout rooms. And it was pretty scary, but they pulled it off and had an inspirational keynote. And you know, the idea of keynote is to kind of set a stage to maybe be a little bit, you know, to set some inquiry, to get us thinking. And I think that's certainly what Curtis and Carlos did for us in thinking about our future. You know, your guys, our last board meeting earlier this week, right?
Seems like it.
You know, we talked about how the central component of our work as a school district needs to remain on equity. And, you know, we've had quite a bit of work in terms of supporting a more equitable school system and breaking down some of the systemic racism and barriers that exist. But we know we have more work to do. And so, you know, the Equity Task Force and their recommendations has brought us far. Having one combined elementary school program. And the, the, the work now too is, is in, in the education. And we've talked about the importance to have an ethnic studies lens on all of our curriculum, K through twelve. And so trying to find a way to blend the work that we've been doing, the further equity work that we need to do, along with the, the curriculum and instruction. Curtis and Carlos are both teachers. They're currently practicing educators. They, they both, in particular, Curtis Acosta spent time as a high school history teacher, teaching ethnic studies. And he shared a clip from a video, a documentary that was made about his experience from a, a video called Precious Knowledge. Encourage folks to check that out. So one of the cool things about this, and I noted it in the cover sheet, is it also brings together three very important organizations in our community. Quodzon Hillsburg and the Hillsburg Education Foundation. And we, we met, and you know, I don't know if Superintendent Van den Hoofel is able to, to speak here. We met Mr. Akar, Dr. Acosta through a partnership over the summer, a panel that Dr. Acosta and Superintendent Van den Hoofel participated in together that was set up by Quodzon Hillsburg. So we, as a district, are very excited about this triangulation between Quodzon, the district, and Hillsburg Education Foundation to support this work, not just in the schools, but as an entire community and a better blending and a braiding of what we do and how we interact with community and who we are as a school district. And, and we think these are the right gentlemen to do it. They've already been engaged with Santa Rosa City Schools. Aricely Romo Flores, you may be able to speak to that a little bit. We've heard good things from our friends in Santa Rosa City through the Health Action Network. And I'll say, I think it's important for everybody to hear that we have a commitment, a financial commitment to fundraise from Quodzon Hillsburg. And what a gift to the school district. And there, there will be likely some financial support through HEDU, HAF, the Hillsburg Education Foundation as well. But a big commitment, not only in the work, but in the financing of this. And that's why you're not approving a contract tonight. What you have is a proposal that we have discussed with our friends at Quodzon Hillsburg and Hillsburg Education Foundation, at both their operational management level and at their board level. All three organizations are ready to say, yep, let's do this together. So we, we wanted to share the proposal with you. Superintendent Van den Hoofel and I will have a meeting with Carlos and Curtis next week, based on the conversation that we have here tonight. So there's quite a bit in the packet. There's the cover sheet and there's the proposal. I hope you've had a chance to look over that. If you don't have it, maybe up on your screens right now. Superintendent Van den Hoofel, did you want to add anything? I wasn't sure whether you're able.
No, I'm here. And you, you got it all. The, I will say, I actually heard of them from Santa Rosa City Schools from Diane Kiddera, where I'd met them and I didn't know they were going to be participating in the, I think it was like Charla Comunitaria. It was a, it was on Hillsburg Facebook Live event that I was on a panel for. And really hit it off with them and loved where they were coming from and hearing about the work in Napa and, and began pursuing it after that. So as Erin said, we, we believe they are the logical next step for us in our equity work and they're the right people to do it. And Diane Kiddera from Santa Rosa, the superintendent, raved about the change that they were able to bring to their district and how good they are. So really excited about it.
Any comments or questions after reviewing what's in the board packet?
So I had a question. I don't know what page it was on, but it was talking about culturally responsive, sustaining, humanizing teacher. Wait a minute. Anyway.
You got it.
Page seventy-six.
They called it crush. They go, they go by crush. So culturally, yeah, responsive, sustaining, humanizing.
What I was curious about was what that is exactly. And you don't have to tell me, but I think it would be really helpful this fall to have a presentation on, on what those methodologies are. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was curious when I was reading this, that I wanted to know what those are.
Yeah.
So I would be, I would be.
The teacher in you is coming out, Ms. Velazquez.
I know. And, and I'm sitting here thinking, you know, I only have three more meetings. Really, I will, I want to suck all this up. But anyway, it would, it would, I would really appreciate that if we could, could, or you could just tell me if nobody else is particularly interested in that kind of. I am.
I think that's a great question. I would love to see that as well.
Yeah, you know, it makes me think that it would be a really great thing to have Dr. Acosta and Curtis Hagendorf present. You know, I think I could do somewhat of a job right now, but I, I, I have to tell you, part of the reason we're hiring these guys is because I too need to know this as a district.
Right. Well, we all do.
Yeah. And so I, I, I would welcome the chance to have Curtis and Carlos present at the board meeting and possibly do a session with, with the board, a learning session.
Oh, it would be fabulous. This fall, please, while I'm still on the board.
I agree. I would love to have like a study session with them because there's so much still don't understand. Like, it looks great on paper, but I still, I'm not clear on the outcomes. Like, what do we expect to see as a result of this work?
Yeah, I'd love to see videos of, of, of what it looks like.
And what are the expected outcomes? Like, for me, the true equity work is when you, when you don't have a disparity in outcomes, right? Learning outcomes and economic outcomes, all of that other stuff that makes up a community. And so I'm always curious when our equity work doesn't talk about academic outcomes. So I don't know if it's in here and I just don't see it or?
No, what's important, I think, is that was spoken about a bit in their, in their keynote with us and the slide they shared and really putting some meat on it. And we, we did record their keynote and have their slide deck. And they spoke about and used the Youth Legacy Project that, that Carlos Hagendorf in particular, pardon me. Yeah, Carlos Hagendorf was in charge of in Napa. And the student outcomes in terms of not just graduation rate, but, but as, as you said, the, the further down the road outcomes in terms of employability, earning, wage earning, opportunities. And then I, I, you know, what's important, and we can share the slides and the, maybe Karen, we can send out the recording to that, to, to the board members to refresh memory and just get it, get it back, is this part about capturing all students as meaningful members of our society. And that all of our kids, no matter what they desire to do, what their background is, are contributing meaningful human beings. And that's, you know, the human, the humanizing part of this. So we'll, we'll share the deck and, you know, write, write good questions then. Yeah.
So I, I second what Aricely's saying. I'd like to have a study session on what this is.
I agree. I think this, I think this work is, you've heard me say it before, vitally important to understand the cultural learning styles of a will or instructional styles that we need to employ for all of our kids. And again, not just our Hispanic community, but our white kids as well. I, I trusting that these two gentlemen are, have proven success in, in moving us forward, but also opening, and then you said, I don't know. I don't know either. And I suspect many of us, so I'm looking at pictures, don't know either. And it's so great that we're, we're open to learning and it sounds like we're on our path. So, and I agree, I'd love to have a study session. You know, the other thing, if I might suggest, is maybe even prior to the next board meeting for the public, I know they can go on at any time, but maybe just have, if the board meeting is at five, maybe four to five, have the keynote on Zoom that people can kick into if they want, just a thought.
Well, and the other thing I want to make sure that I voice is, you know, even when we worked with the National Equity Project, I, I was a little disappointed in that in the original work, there was no talk about equity outcomes, like academic outcomes. It came later, but, and I don't know how it got added on, if it was just because it was, you know, we focused that, that was missing. But that was really concerning to me. So I, I really want to make sure that our equity work is grounded in evidence. And I want, so, you know, what's our benchmark? What do we want to see by this time? Or how do we know what's making a difference? You know, how are we measuring the success of any program that we implement? So I don't see that part here and I'd love to have more clarity on that.
To me, this is really almost kind of part of, maybe a study session could dovetail into our strategy setting and our, you know, all the things we've been talking about around resetting our vision and our mission. And, and again, integrating not just like equity as a line item, but equity enmeshed in everything. And how, you know, this could be an interesting entree into that discussion, right? To have that as a really strong foundation and to learn more about this approach and how that can then influence and feed into how we're talking about and how we're setting policy and priorities.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So I just, I just want to, and have for bringing this on because it's an additional cost to us. So it's beautiful that we're, you know, that they're investing in our community. I definitely want to thank them for that. So I don't want it to be construed as not being appreciative of this. It's so necessary. I just would like to see, have an idea of what we can expect to see as a result of our work.
Yeah.
I just, I want to add, say something about what Erin just said, that I think feeds right into our big picture learning and our summer school. And that is that our students are valuable contributors, no matter which pathway they take. And it doesn't have to be all kids doing A to G or all kid, they need to have those opportunities. Absolutely need to support them in that. But, you know, I mean, I have two different children. I have one child who just went as far as you can go in education, and another one who had to carve his own pathway, and they are equally successful human beings. And one of the reasons why I loved the whole thing about Marcy Becerra is that, and the summer school thing, is that we're talking about kids finding their value and not being subjected to somebody else's value system on what, what their contributions are as people. So what Erin said there, I think, was really critical. And I, I'm very interested and excited about what these guys are going to bring to us.
And Judy, you were so spot on, and that's what equity is.
Yeah, and echoing Aricely also, not only the funding from Heaven Corazon, but just that partnership is so about.
Fabulous.
When we all work together, amazing things are going to happen. It's going to be great.
I agree. I think that collaboration, and I think we talked about it earlier at the very beginning of the board meeting, and Miss Alcazar said it too, it's the collaboration that really brings a, brings your efforts to a different level. You have a different, it's a different experience when there's collaboration. And I'm really excited to see that that, I'll use the word finally, I finally feel like that's starting to happen with some, you know, groups in the community, they're, they're partnering, partnering together to really pool not only financial resources, but their, their wealth of knowledge and the, the skills that they can bring that each individually cannot bring. But together, there's some change can really happen. So I appreciate that too.
And HAF as well.
Oh yeah, absolutely, for sure.
Yeah, HAF and Corazon, yes, for sure.
It's the trifecta.
Yeah, exactly.
Are there any other questions regarding the Acosta proposal? And again, we, we don't know what we don't know quite yet, but hopefully we will, we'll, we'll work with Chris and Erin to get.
Yeah, this is the very beginnings of, of a partnership relationship. I think everybody's kind of still trying each other on. And, you know, I'll be honest that this hasn't gotten the attention that it would in a normal year as we've been doing distance learning and, you know, things are going to go slow. This is a multi-year project. But we did want to allow for some discussion and, you know, you guys, perfect, right? Exactly. Took lots of notes while we were talking about expected outcomes and a study session and some, some good stuff and good guidance here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership and Superintendent Van den Hoofel, yours as well. Appreciate that.
Yeah, because this is not a project that just goes on the back burner for two years, right? While we're feeling like this is something we need to start and maybe not as quickly as we'd like due to crazy current circumstances, but it's happening. So this.
And I would like to take a moment to say something completely out of context, but this is exactly the reason why I am super excited that Aricely has, has decided to run again because she is our accountability piece. And I don't hear that come up from the other board members as much as I have from Aricely. So I really appreciate that, Aricely. And I just want to, I want to thank you for that. And I'm excited to know that's going to keep happening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, Erin, you're not going anywhere. Now we're going to talk about Math 180 supplemental curriculum for the junior high.
Yeah, so this is another one that was originally in a previous board meeting and we've had to put it off in order to take care of other business and not have six-hour marathon meetings. So this, this is coming later than it should, and I apologize for that, but such, such is life, right? So Math 180 is a curriculum that we piloted last year as a result of a recommendation from Dr. Jo Bowler and her crew at U-Cube. In our early conversations with her, you know, picking her brain and her right-hand gal Kathy Williams, who we're still in, in contact with, you know, asked, you know, what should we do for intervention, support, remediation, particularly at the middle school level? And, you know, it's a, it's a tough time in students' lives. It's really when they start to either turn on or turn off to math somewhat permanently and really have that self-concept of I'm a math person or I'm not. And, you know, a canned curriculum is not always the answer. Math 180 is, it's a blended learning curriculum. So it's, it's a station-rotation curriculum in that there's a teaching part, an online part, and a small group part. So we tried it out in small numbers with our two special educators at the middle school last year, Kayla LaRosa and Emily Decept, both used Math 180 with students last year quite successfully. And, you know, it's a complex program. It's got a lot going on. There's lots of bells and whistles, which is good. But it's got, you know, technology, it's got workbooks, it's got teacher instruction. But we did feel like it would be, and we had enough success last year that we went ahead and thought it would be a good idea to use in the two math support classes. So we have two math support classes for general education students. These are students that have come out of fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And we are nervous about their long-term trajectory for math. And they need more than just their single course of standard, standards-based math. They need to be told it differently. They may need a hole filled from long ago, where they just didn't learn a basic structure or understanding of some of the basics of math throughout the sequence. So Robin Doherty is, is our math support teacher this year. They're combined classes in terms of grade level. So we have two sections, grades six through eight of math support using Math 180. This contract is big at the beginning because you, you buy some professional development, you buy the licenses at the beginning, and then the costs go down. It's just like when you purchase any curriculum, it's expensive at first, and then there's supplemental, not supplemental, there's consumable materials that need to be purchased every year if you stick with it in the workbooks. So it is supplemental. We, you know, you guys approved the California, pardon me, the College Preparatory Math Project, CPM, is our core academic curriculum that's used in the grade six, grade seven, grade eight math courses. This is a supplemental piece to support math support classes. So, background. Any questions or conversations?
In a normal year, whatever that is, how would this be used?
You know, one of the, and I, thanks for prompting, because I, in a normal year, it probably wouldn't be used too differently than it's being used this year, other than there'd be more opportunity for class discussion and collaboration, right? There is still the station-rotation where there is kind of the set lesson and the teacher is instructing the whole group. It is adaptive software, and so students are using different elements and different parts of, of the online program and different parts of the workbooks. I have to say, in a virtual environment, I can't imagine doing math support class with all these different needs without some type of program. It would be a lot to ask a teacher. So I don't know that you'd see the model be a hugely different, other than maybe some conversation that's hard to replicate through Zoom. But it is a big help in the distance learning environment in terms of bringing some structure and being able to lean on the adaptive software element.
Good.
So the kids are involved in a regular math class and this.
Correct.
Two periods of math.
Yes.
Like, Integrated Math One at eighth grade.
Right, exactly. And, you know, we do math support at the high school as well. So we have Integrated Math One support. So we also have some students at the high school who have two math classes as well.
Right, okay. When I was reviewing the agenda for last month, when this was originally on the agenda, I had questions for Erin about, because we had just approved, the beginning of COVID, the new math curriculum for the junior high, and it was like, what's this? Like, we just approved this. And so Erin explained that it's a supplemental and it's really for some of the intervention and really different ways of looking at things, which I'm in full supportive, especially within the junior high, because, boy, if you aren't up to speed by then, it just, it doesn't get any easier. It just gets worse and the whole is dug deeper. So, so it is supplemental for the second, like you said, Judy, not the primary math class, but a secondary.
So they have two, two classes.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, to trustee, Ariselli Romo Flores' question about outcomes, one of the reasons we liked it so much, and Diane Conger may be able to speak to this, Read 180 has been around for a long time, right? Read 180 is, is a product that many educators are familiar with. Math 180 is a newer product modeled on kind of the same philosophy of blended learning and being able to provide high levels of differentiation. One of the beautiful things that this company has been able to figure out is actionable data. There's more data that comes through Read 180 and Math 180 than we know what to do with, both through what the adaptive software is doing and utilizing some of the, the micro-assessments, formative assessments. So it's one of the reasons why we said, yep, let's do this after the short pilot with two of our special educators and that we really like the data that we are seeing and the movement that we could see with our kids in using this, this program.
I, I'm thrilled to see that there's some professional development tied to it, too, because, you know, I know this program with Read 180 has been used in many places, too. But when teachers don't know how to access, how to access it correctly or fulfill the purpose of the program, we don't often get the results that we want to see, even though the program has lots of data to support that it is an effective program. So I love that we are including the professional development in our quote, so, thank you.
Yeah, and that professional development, we continue, Kayla LaRosa, who teaches HGH Math for our students who have more severe learning disabilities, is continuing to use Math 180. And so now Ms. LaRosa, who's more familiar with the program, and Ms. Doherty working together. So there's kind of some tiered professional development that each of them will get, and then some together. Well, they'll be working as a, as a team, hopefully.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make, can I make a quick comment about?
Yeah, I'm glad. Thank you, Diane.
So only because I'm a giant fan of both programs. And what I super like about the professional development is they do sort of data walks, and they do it with the administrator and they do it with the teachers. So they will have regular check-ins. You know, you have this coach, you have this data expert sort of sitting next to you, helping you analyze your students and showing you how to tweak their program or what the student is doing. And I felt like I've used Read 180 as a teacher, and I've been an administrator, you know, of course, overseeing it for quite some time. And I just felt that to, to be really valuable. And the other piece that's really cool is kids like it. You know, they, they feel like they're accessing the grade-level curriculum, but in a different way. And so then you get some student buy-in. So that's just my, my plug for it.
Just back to the PD, this is for this year, the professional development?
Correct. Yeah, what you're seeing and practice should have been that we brought this to you before we launched, and I apologize.
Was it you?
We tried. There was no way that we were going to be able to see it. We were evacuating.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it is PD that has already, there's some, much has happened. And thank you to teacher Robert Doherty, who launched into this prior to official school starting and got her PD organized and has already started to participate. But it goes throughout the year. As Diane Conger mentioned, it's a, it's a, it's a complex program and has lots of elements. And so having the coach, both for data and to continue to learn how to implement the program is an important piece.
And will we survey the, the teaching staff toward the end of the year? See if they want maybe a little bit more next year follow-up?
More professional development?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and that's why, you know, the, the feedback from Emily Decept and Kayla LaRosa is really what brought Principal Miller and I to discuss this with Robin Doherty for the other math support class. So, yeah, the teachers definitely are an important part of making the decision.
An action item. If there are any other questions?
I have a quick question. Is this Title I funded as well, so it's supplemental? Or is there other funds we're using for this? Just curious.
This, this, we use the Title II funds to pay for the professional development. So of the, you know, of the cost, about half is professional development and the other half is for the software. So we use Title II funds to pay for the professional developments, restricted funds that must be used for Title II. The software, generally, we, we use title, pardon me, general funds. Because we are more interested in using this in the distance learning environment, we're investigating where we could use CARES funds for this, because it's so supportive in a distance learning environment.
All right, thank you, Erin.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the Math Supplemental Curriculum and Professional Development for Hillsburg Junior High School Math Support Courses.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Erin. Oh, so I need to, a public hearing. I get to, if I had a gavel, I'd, I'd hit the gavel to call to order a public hearing for the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for 2021. Do we have any public comments or on, during this public hearing?
I do not see any public comments on the chat, or I'm looking at my email and I don't have any via email.
Okay, if, and revisit that, but I will now close the public hearing, gavel, gavel. And, and now we'll move on to item 121F, which is the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Erin?
All right, we're having fun now.
You're gonna throw a lot of them, Gary?
Yeah.
Water, or anything?
Yeah, Karen, we have a PowerPoint for this. We have a slide deck. So as Karen pulls up the slide deck, a little bit of context here. And for the trustees, many of these slides will be familiar. When you approved our reopening plan over the summer, many of these, the content from these slides were in that very same reopening plan slide deck. So you're, you don't, you're not forgetting things. It's, it's a review of some things you've already seen, and so I'm going to blow through those pretty quickly. We have been doing some stakeholder engagement, been visiting with the Governance Councils, the ELAC and DLAC with this same PowerPoint and getting input from our community members, our state, you know, our, our parents and our teachers. So the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan is a Senate Bill 98 requirement. So we have to do this. We've been told by our legislatures, this is the document you will fill out. It replaces the LCAP. So you'll remember, we did not, as we normally would, approve an LCAP in June. So this replaces the LCAP. I think this next bullet is really the most important piece of information on this slide. And what we're doing here in this document is we're memorializing the planning process that's already been underway. So it's basically trying to capture what happened June, July, August, and, and projecting out a little bit to September, October, November. So memorializing the planning that happened over the summer, projecting for the next couple of months. We do anticipate having to do an LCAP, and that process will start in December, January, writing the plan, getting stakeholder input. So this is kind of capturing the last three months and trying to project forward a bit. We'll ask you to approve this at the end of the month in a special board meeting. So this is kind of the first read and the public presentation of this information. You know, for anybody who's here tonight, if you have anything that you'd want to add or ask more questions about, feel free to reach out to me and Diane Conger or Superintendent Van den Hooibl. We'd be happy to hear you out, take your, take your questions, suggestions. And this final formal document will be approved by the board at the end of the month in a special board meeting. And we'll deliver it to SCO. They've already done a preliminary review. We got the results back. So it's a thumbs up. We have a couple little things we need to deal with. Nothing of, of consequence, I guess, nothing, nothing major. So they've already taken a read and gave us, you're, you're on the right track. Will be available in both English and Spanish on the website as, you know, a historical document once we're done here. Next slide. So the state has told us these are the elements that they want us to speak to in the document. So the draft document is in the board packet. If anybody listening tonight wants to take a look at the actual Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, actually written plan, it's in the board packet. It is a draft. I'll remind everybody, it is not completed, and we'll complete it over the next couple of weeks. But we were given a template from the state, and these are the boxes that they wanted to address. These are the elements that they wanted us to, to speak to. Next slide. We have had some guiding documents. This will be familiar from the reopening slide deck and using these, right? We're not making this up on our own, although sometimes it feels like we are. But we have gotten some guidance, continuing to get guidance in, and these have been helpful documents that, that we've been reading and combing through and making sure that we understand. Next slide. I mentioned the stakeholder engagement piece started over the summer. We've had school committee meetings that ran all summer long. They met. Thank you to the teachers who gave up so much of their summer to work with their principal, to envision what school could look like. We spent a lot of time talking about hybrid learning. I think we were all hopeful that a hybrid model would be launched when we started, got very deep into planning for hybrid, and then realized that that wasn't going to happen and had to shift gears pretty quickly towards the end of July and first part of August. Once we, we got the public health orders, that wasn't happening. So I want to publicly acknowledge the multitude of teachers. Each school had four, five, six, sometimes eight, nine teachers who worked through the summer with their principal. We did three parent surveys. I think we got a little bit of parent survey fatigue. We did a student survey, right, a school ended, a staff survey, and have been meeting with ELAC and Governance Councils, both, you know, towards the end of the school year and now in September to, to share. We did the district and site reopening webinars on Facebook Live, solicited questions before those, tried to address questions and share the plans. And again, multiple hours in the employee negotiation. So a long summer of negotiating to make sure that our, our staff could come back and feel safe and cared for and think that the teachers and the time, I know there's quite a few that are here tonight with us. And so I want to publicly acknowledge you all for giving up your summer to negotiate those MOUs. Next slide. This is a, as a, a repeat, but I think important information, and then we want to make sure and we will ensure that students are connected. It's not a perfect system, right? We know we've got some Chromebooks that aren't working. We have hotspots that aren't working. We have, you know, we're, we have hitches. This is not a perfect system. But we are trying desperately to make sure that every kid is connected every day when they need to, to do learning. Diane and the, and the team addressing staff and students' social, emotional well-being. We've got a very robust team and two district school psychologists, a full-time behavior specialist who is overseeing, two masters of social work, Diane herself, the principals, you know, everybody really trying to make sure that we're caring for each other and we're watching out for each other as, as employees who are working through this and keeping that social, emotional learning as a central part of every day that we do, that we do with our kids. So that's, I just want to make sure we keep that top of mind as we get into things, right? As we get into fifth, sixth week of school, we don't want to forget that social, emotional learning part. I keep going to hit my arrow. Next slide. Nope. We are fully launched with the Expanded ASIS Program. We have over 80 students being served at Foss Creek every day. And we have a waitlist, and I'll say out there, the waitlist is because we need more staff. We, we have to, it's such a long day. We have, or the city has staff there from about seven in the morning until 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, and so that's more than an eight-hour day. So they have to have two shifts, and we have two staff members with each grouping of 12 kids. So it is a big staff load, over 80 students being served at Foss Creek right now. We need to get more staff. So anybody who knows somebody who is willing and able and wanting to work with kids to support the distance. To support the distance learning and enrichment program, we would love for you to fill out an application so we can get more kids enrolled. It's going really well. Both principals have made a site visit. I made a site visit with our nurse last week. Very impressed with the work that they're doing and the care that they're providing for our kids. We have a small number of students over at the Boys and Girls Club, grade six through 12. It's a small teen club. Serving kids who, who need extra support, whose parents are working or in some cases they need the, the, the internet, internet connectivity where our hotspots won't work for them. Next slide. This is a, this is a repeat. I think the important thing here is that second bullet. That, you know, we have to pay attention to our health orders. And I think, you know, I've talked to plenty of parents who are like, why can't you just open? Can't you just open? Hear from us that as soon as, as it is safe and the health orders allow us that we want to get our kids back with us on campus. And we would like nothing more to do that. But the health orders preclude us currently from doing that. And when we, if we hit and we think we're going to. You know, slide that card out there, that November 6 deadline, which is the end of the elementary first trimester. Then HUSD will commit to full distance learning through the month of December until winter break. So we're getting closer to that. And while COVID rates are going down and things are improving. Just not seeing it go down and getting the rapid testing and the contact tracing happening in our county the way we, that we need. So. Know we want our kids back, but we've got to keep that health and safety at, at the forefront of our minds. Next slide. This is also a repeat from the reopening. So nothing new here. Next slide, we'll just kind of keep going. Again, we talked about this in the reopening, that the Senate Bill 98 decreased the required daily instructional minutes. Our school schedules meet or exceed this. I did get asked in the Hillsburg Elementary School Governance Council. You know, if we were able to go to hybrid, if we were able at some point to go full back. With this change and the answer is no, right now that, you know, this is legislation that holds for the year. So the legislation, legislatures would have to go back. And give us a new marching order, a new, they revised ed code to do this. So. This is what we're looking at in terms of instructional minutes for the school year as far as we know. No matter the model, right? Whether we're distance learning or in hybrid or full, fullback. We can always do more, right? And if we agree with the unions to do more, we would do, we, we could offer that if we mutually agreed. I think this is an important slide and I want to pause here for a minute and let people read. I'm going to stop talking because I think this is an important slide. So we know that all students, no matter who they are, where they come from, what their home life, you know. Background, no matter who you are. We cannot replicate what we did and what we do in the classrooms. Certainly through the spring and, and even now, as much as we're trying. We know that there is going to be some pupil learning loss. And so we're doing our best to administer formative assessments. Even through online learning. It's interesting and I'm sure those elementary teachers that are listening. You know, it's not easy to have kids do a standardized assessment from their bedroom. With a parent kind of behind them and, you know, this is an interesting time to do assessments. But we are doing our best and we'll continue to do form, formal and formative assessments as we move forward. So we can get a handle on where our kids are. And how we can stem the learning loss. Really important, and I know our teachers are focusing on standards based instruction and using our high quality curriculum. You know, we've made it a point in this district. We've spent a lot of money on the curriculum itself and on training. To make sure that our, that our teachers and our students have. Curriculum that's aligned to the most current standards and that they've been trained on it and really staying focused and not wavering away from our, our standards based instruction. And staying on, on target. We'll be working throughout the year and, and it's a topic we'll talk about as a district leadership team on Friday. About the process to more formally identify the essential standards. So there are some guiding documents about essential standards. But our teachers need to play a role in, in. In weighing in on that and what the essential standards are for their kids and also based on the assessments. So moving over to the effective strategies, sorry Karen, not yet, moving over to the effective strategies measured. So. You know, Connie Marks talked a little bit about the attendance that we did in summer school and. You know, Diane really is taking the lead on attendance and engagement monitoring in her position and working her tail off with our attendance clerks, our assistant principals and other support staff. To make those phone calls, not just to rely on our autodiler, but to reach out in person with our bilingual staff and say. How can we help? How can we make sure that they're engaged? What's going on? Find out it's a dead hotspot or they're at grandma's house and grandma doesn't know how to log on. So. You know, getting out there and making phone calls. I mentioned we're, we're doing our academic assessments. We're doing STAR right now, K through five. We'll launch it in six through eight very soon. We have a whole host of support staff who are out there. Counselors, talking with teachers, behavior specialists, our paraprofessionals serve a very important role, right? They're doing breakout rooms with kids and meeting them in smaller groups. Getting information and monitoring the feedback from our paraprofessionals. So lots going on, both formal and informal in terms of measuring effectiveness. Next slide. This is a rerun. We've talked about hold harmless grading is no longer in, in effect and that we are using our standards based and great letter grade system. But I will say we're, we're trying and making a point to help our kids and our teachers be flexible with their grading when there's extenuating circumstances. And that, you know, nothing is perfect right now. Yeah, I got my own fifth grader 10 minutes late to a Zoom today because we were eating lunch. I'm like, oh my God, you have a Zoom get, you know? So even in, in the best circumstances with two type A educator moms, kids are going to be late. And so. We need to understand that there, there's stuff going on and there's, there's not bells ringing and we need to have grace and compassion and patience with each other and that that should show up in. How we measure knowledge and skill with our kids. Next slide. Diane, we didn't talk about this before, but you're here and do you have a minute to, to log in? Give, give me a breath here.
Sorry. Um, yeah. So when she mentioned the attendance and I just want you to know that it's not me making the outreach calls. It's actually the sites themselves and they've been doing a wonderful job. So I didn't want you to think. That it was me, but they, you know, one of the key components is of course that we have that sort of daily live connection with students. And we're using our ARIES system in order to monitor both the engagement part and the attendance. So. We're trying really hard with the requirements from the state, which are in my opinion unreasonable. I know this is a public meeting, but I'm just saying it. And so we're trying to find ways to utilize the systems that we already have in place. And I think we've got a good thing going. So all of the teachers, you know, were sort of, you know, given, given the leeway, I would say, and of course, most of them want to. Take it easy, you know, these first few weeks, you know, don't push out the academics as hard as take time to listen to the kids, to build relationships. And so to help them do that, we not only had some sort of little seminars with the school psychs and with Alex, our behavior specialist and counseling intern. But we also sort of curated a library, both for parents and for staff and. On those engagement strategies and a little bit about how to take care of yourself as the caregiver during this situation. Don't, don't forget about yourself. So. Because our teachers, we know are stressed out like, like most of us are. So. What else? Yeah, just kind of staying with, I'm so glad that we did the trauma work last year would be. The deeper trauma work last year because it would be impossible to do this work without having a trauma background since we've. Just undergone one of the most traumatic events in, in our history probably. And then again, a fire, you know, so it's, we're sort of hit hard there. And there are counseling interns are just getting up and running right now. They're assigned to HES, Fitch Mountain and the junior high. We have three of them and they're supervised by Alex and they're sitting in on little meetings. They're having lunch groups for students. And just, you know, finding ways to support them just by checking in casually right now. And then kind of getting a temperature of what's going on and they'll provide more intensive services if necessary. Does anyone have any questions?
So I did, and you, you touched on it when you said that they were doing some lunchtime. Groups. I was wondering if. In the future, soon, they're going to be starting to, to have groups for the kids all the way up from little people up. So that they're having, you know, personal interaction with the kids.
Oh, you mean the, the counselors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The psych and the counselors and the.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
That's the plan. And so right now. They want to be strategic about that. And so they're trying to figure out where's the need, you know, is it about building friendships? Is it about feeling lonely? Is it about stress that they're experiencing over academics anxiety? And then I think they'll, you know, form those groups like groups based, based on that. But no, that is definitely the plan. And the other thing that's in the works. Probably next month is kind of creating. Two times a month roughly, we want to create a parent information night for both our English speaking families and our Spanish speaking families. And just find a way, you know, sort of like, like Lucy and the peanuts, you know, where you stop in and ask a behavior specialist if you have a question. You know, they'll give a short little presentation and, you know, you pop, pop in and, and ask. Either a school psychologist or the behavior specialist if you have a question. And so they're constantly working. We have an amazing group. And so. I probably haven't even touched on half the things they want to get off the ground. But Judy, to answer your question is, yeah, of course, that's something that we do regularly and.
Yeah, I know that you did it.
Yeah.
I, I'm really worried about these kids.
Me too.
Just loneliness at a time when their whole life is social interaction. And.
Yeah.
So I think that having a, having a lonely group, lonely, but you know, where they can at least interact with one another on Zoom.
Yeah, I think for the littler kids right now, they're looking at that through the lens of clubs, you know, how do you make things fun? And how do you, how do you get kids with a similar interest? And then they build friendships from there and the counselors there to model what it's like to have an interaction or, you know, they're there to sort of model, model those positive social skills. So. That's, that's what we have cooking at least for now.
Cool. Thanks, Anne. I'm, I'm going to move us along here and go ahead and go to the next slide, I think. So this is a repeat from the reopening deck. Taking attendance. My goodness, it is hard. I'll just say that. Every student has to be marked in some way every day. And teachers have to mark how they're engaged. I want to put this in public record. This is not my idea. This is not Diane's idea. This is coming down hard and with a lot of confusion from the state. Pretty obvious, we've got people who don't work in schools giving us templates to, to fill out. We're doing our best. John Camera is a miracle worker in ARIES. ARIES is recoded, ARIES is our student information system and how we take attendance. They're, they're recoding a bunch of, literally like having to code and change the way the whole system works, ARIES is. And John Camera, who is our ARIES administrator, working hard with Diane to make this doable for teachers. So they don't spend all of their time. Tracking things and not able to work with our kids. So. It's a big left. We're trying to make it easier and also keep us compliant in the eyes of, of the state and monitoring and auditing that we know is going to come. So. Enough about that. Next slide. Pupil and family engagement and outreach. I am so thankful we made the decision to have the bilingual parent outreach. Coordinators in our district. I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. They are lifesavers. The work that they're doing every day to help make sure that our families are. Connected to the school, both, you know, in terms of like internet and also just connected to knowing what's going on. Helping to make sure food and housing insecurity is not disrupting education. Lots of really, really amazing behind the scenes work going on. We're required to have a tiered re-engagement plan as part of this. Diane and team are, are on it. You know, it says there, any student that is absent for two or more days. We need to start taking action on. And so lots of phone calls, lots of time being spent and kind of redirecting some of our staff. Particularly in the front offices to take on this tiered re-engagement plan and making contact with families and not just relying on our autodiler system as we have in the past, but personalizing it. To a much higher degree in order to make sure that they're engaged in distance learning because we don't see them on campus. So it's. Takes, takes more staff, more time to do that re-engagement. Next slide. We saw this earlier, again, that feels like a long time ago. Our, our nutrition program, in my opinion, second to none. The amount of food that is going out in various different ways. Debbie spoke to that earlier tonight. You know, breaking news that the USDA did extend the free meals for all students through 2020. So we can continue to feed any, any kid in our community who needs food. And, you know, we ebbs and flows in terms of the amount and where we're bringing it. And, you know, they have just stayed on their toes. And are making sure that food's going out to different places, bringing it to some of our, our more. Dense areas where we can bring food there. They're bringing food to the 80 plus kids at Foss Creek. So I, I feel pretty good that the nutritional aspect, at least during the day for our students is, is solid. Next slide. The last piece, we're almost there. We got two more slides. This hearkens back to LCAP. So this will be familiar. Those of you are familiar with the LCAP, right? We get supplemental and concentration dollars in theory. We are a community funded district, so it's not really additional dollars to us. But we still have to spend a little over a million dollars in, in our district on our English language learners, our low income students, foster and homeless youth. So we have to prove that we are increasing and improving services with an eye particularly towards our English learners, low income, foster and homeless. It's interesting when I do the engagement. Many people are not, are, are surprised that this is an increased or improved services, that some of these things aren't just required elements of education today. But know that all of these things on this slide and the next are above and beyond the base service that schools are required to provide. You know, some of the things in particular that I'm proud of as a district and you all as a board have made a commitment to that last bullet there is a full-time live district library media teacher and library technicians. I think I spoke about this previously. There are many districts who are cutting these positions. Pre-distance learning and even more. I'll say that Lorena Savedo, Greta, Erica Drew and Laura Lee are, are library staff are as busy as ever, particularly with the technology help. They're getting ready to curate books. So when kids come and do their pickup of their school materials, that they have got some curated books that are, are going in and out. And so the libraries are still a very active. Very active place. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is where we're letting you all know and letting the, the state know how we are utilizing the, the. The additional funds that are to be primarily directed to, to our unduplicated students. So. That's what I got. We're going to open it up. It's a long night. Yeah, we will bring this back to you guys in a special board meeting at the end. I'm happy to take any comments tonight, any emails from you all or other conversation to provide input to to get this plan done.
Judy, you're muted.
On the actual plan template on page 11, I just had a question about the funding. It says the total funds for the hotspots and then it says contributing, yes? Some of them say no, and some of three of them say yes. I just don't know what that meant, contributing.
If whether it primarily contributes to that increased or improved services.
Okay.
Yeah.
Money.
No, it just has to do with what bucket it comes out of in in the bucket that Debbie has to pay attention to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any real questions. I think the material was pretty thorough. I do want to say thank you, though, because in a regular year, I'm in awe of the work that's done by you guys and and looking and the teachers and at all, at all. It's just, it's a whole new world and I really appreciate the time and energy that's gone into this. And I do recognize, too, the impact it has on the teachers in the classroom. What seems to be insignificant, just keeping track of attendance and when they're, you know, synchronous and asynchronous. It's can only be described as an incredible headache, I'm sure. But I do, I appreciate, you know, putting a stiff upper lip and just making it happen. So we recognize that it's not easy and it's a big ask. It seems like a little ask. There's a lot of things that seem like little asks and we know they add up. So we we just, I thank you from the teacher side, the administrative side, the the district side. We recognize the hard work and thank you very much. It's really all that needs to be said, I think.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Agreed. So we are not voting on this. This was discussion and I do encourage you, take a deep dive. It's a lot of words. And and if you have questions, reach out to Erin and anyone listening and watching. You know, this is, it's about community input. It's not too late. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, reopening plan. Thank you for the learning continuity plan. Thank you for working on the LCAP in the future.
One of these days, they'll run out of templates, right? Like, they'll just run out. I'll have filled them all out.
Somebody's going to come up with another one.
It's insane how much.
Don't tempt them, don't tempt them.
Yeah, right, right.
And none of these are simple, right? None of them are just like check a few boxes and fax it in. All complicated.
Here's the truth. This is what I decided. The people that make these templates have will never and have never had to fill them out, right?
Or read them.
Right?
Or read them.
Or they would just have a big box that says, you know, fill in. They would never do this.
Well, thank you. And thank you for the appreciation to the teachers. You are so right on that, you know, there is administrative that we have to deal with at our level at the board and whatnot. But it breaks my heart that this is taking away from them being able to plan and work with our kids. And no, we we're trying to keep it away from them and trying to get better systems in place. So thank you for acknowledging that, trustees.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, on to in person assessments, item 121G with Diane.
Hello again. So just a little preamble, as we're learning more and more about the nuances of this situation we're in right now. It was recommended, nor under normal circumstances, I wouldn't bring forward any of our assessment processes to the board necessarily. But because this is a unique situation, it was suggested that we bring sort of our guidance and our processes before you. So I don't think I'm going to go over them page by page, obviously. But you can see that through School and College Legal and through the National Association of School Psychologists, we crafted an assessment protocol. And we have a checklist and a waiver and sort of a before, during and after. And we've run through it with our nurse, Xenia and I. And we've brought out the tape measure and have all of the PPE equipment in place. And so we feel very secure that we're going to be able to do a good job of maintaining social distancing and following the guidance during this time and getting started, at least with some of our pending initial assessments is what we're looking for. But also, LCAP testing is something that we need to get done. They would follow the same sort of guidance. So I'm just looking for you to approve this, please.
So even LCAP testing would be done this way?
LCAP testing is done with the same, they have to be in person right now, or they have been in person right now. And so any future testing, well, it already was done with those same protocols in place, except for the waiver and the checklist, which we got that guidance just, you know, two weeks ago. But anything going forward will be done that way.
We 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 do have the option for remote LCAP. We're still trying to figure that out. The state just released the guidance on how to do remote LCAP testing. But we, you know, we had to get the initial LCAP done for kids who are new to school, California school, TK Kinder, and then anybody who moved here from California that marked on their home language survey. So when, you know, when it's possible and safe and it makes sense with the district or with the the remote testing to do LCAP remotely, but we need to be able to have both options.
For sure.
I'll move adoption of this item.
Thank you. I will second.
Thank you, Jamie. All right. And this is just a regular vote, yes? So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Everything is so complicated. Okay, week of the school administrator, this is a resolution.
Actually, Franny is going to.
Right. Right. That's my pleasure to take this item and help present this for Chris. I'm not sure you want me to read through the whole resolution, but it is my pleasure to take the opportunity to ask you to acknowledge our wonderful administrators, both both certificated and classified, who help our district be the wonderful place that it is. We couldn't do a lot of what we do without them. And our schools are successful because of our administrators and our superintendent as well, I must say. So it is a resolution 2103. And I believe that maybe some of you want to say something as well, but I do believe Karen has to take a roll call vote as well.
Definitely. Well, I just think that the timing of this is, you know, it is what it is, but especially right now. You know, and full appreciation go out to everyone in the district and for the week of the school administrator, in particular, our administrators and leadership. So, yep. Judy, you're muted. Are you?
It's because my dog is acting up.
Appreciate that. But anyway, trying to talk and I know you're.
Just just so you know, that in honor of the administrators, the board is sending a book to each school library in their honor, as we do every year. And and the only comment I want to make is that as like teachers and like our custodial and food staff, our administrators didn't get a vacation this year. They worked, they worked all summer and way beyond their contract. And want to thank, personally thank them for caring about our our kids to do that.
And I just want to recognize, too, as I think of all these things that we're talking about, especially tonight. In retrospect, the position that the district administration has has us in to be able to face and to really be successful, as successful as possible in a lot of these situations. I just think the, just just thinking that, not even thinking it through because you couldn't know that this was happening, but we just, they positioned us to be where we are, to still be able to provide, I think, such a high quality education to our students, even in the face of all of these challenges. So I really appreciate their their leadership and just the leading by example and even thinking, being one step ahead. I really feel like we're one step ahead a lot of the time. So thank you.
Absolutely. I second that, Jamie.
Can I read one whereas?
Yeah.
It's the third from the bottom. Whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents. These leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state, and I might add, throughout our district. We appreciate you.
Perfectly.
You bet.
Yep, you're here.
Thank you, everyone. So do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
All of us so moved.
Yeah, I know. And then a second by Mike and a roll call vote, Karen.
All right. Trustee Velazquez?
Aye.
Trustee Roma Flores?
Aye.
Trustee Potmussel?
Absolutely.
Trustee Kiff?
Aye.
And President Del Rey?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Item 121I, sufficiency of materials. And then I believe after this, we have the reports and a short break. I do want to point out, it's a little after eight and we still have the budget and things to do. So just making sure we're all on the same page as far as the time. So sufficiency of materials and this is back to Erin.
Actually.
Need to do the public hearing.
Hearing, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I knew that, sorry. Gavel, gavel, public hearing on the sufficiency of materials. Do we have any comments?
I do not. No, there are no public comments.
Okay, now we'll gavel and a public hearing. And now moving on to the resolution on sufficiency of materials, Erin.
Yeah, so this is where I get to say my Girl Scout honor that we have the sufficiency of materials in the subject areas and lab supplies that the state would like. I make light about it, but I do think the teachers who review the materials, you know, the administrators who kind of guide the process on their site, and then the board for always approving what the teachers and sites and I have picked out. And we are a well resourced district. We, you know, you guys have approved history, social science, math, ELA, getting, doing a little bit of science here and there. We've done the K5 science. I feel proud of the instructional materials that we have in our district, both online and in print. And so I can say, as your director, CNI, that on my honor, we have a sufficiency of materials. So then you guys approve.
Any concerns about the sufficiency of our materials? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2104?
I moved. Oh, Judy moves, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Karen.
All right. Trustee Velazquez?
Aye.
Trustee Roma Flores? Trustee Potmussel? Trustee Kiff?
Aye.
And President Del Rey?
Aye.
Perfect.
So reports. Where are we at here? Losing my page, da 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 da. Give me a second. So we have our weekly reports, a half report. Do we have, I saw Sally online earlier, but I don't know that she necessarily has a report.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, all right. How to report?
I don't know if anybody is going to do a.
No, no one, nobody got a.
Robin, would you like to speak or do you want me to read your comment?
Any response?
I can go ahead and read her comment if you would like. It says, teachers have. Yes, she has poor Wi Fi right now, so she'd like me to read it. Teachers have expressed curriculum needs in the content area of math and reading. Curriculum is needed for students who are above grade level in reading and need a curriculum push.
Okay.
And are you, I'm sorry, Robin, you're referring to Fitch Mountain Campus or? Yes, so she's referring to the Fitch Mountain Campus.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. CSCA report?
Yes, Suzie is here.
All right.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Sorry, I haven't been on for the last couple of months. I come home and I focus on other things and I forget that there's a board meeting. Anyway, I just want to say that all of CSCA is doing very well. We are very busy. All the office staff are back on each site and it's a little boring without kids, but we're still very busy with just running things and, you know, fielding phone calls from parents. The first day of school was eight hours of on the phone with parents. But I just want to say thank you that we're really fortunate that all of us are still working a full day during this time. Some are working from home and zooming in classrooms with teachers. That's going very well. But we're happy to be here. We're ready to get the kids back. It's a, it's hard without them. It's hard without them. We miss them. And I feel like I just work in an office now and not at a school. So I'm looking forward to them coming back and, but thank you. We had a meeting today. We had a good turnout and everybody seems to be happy, working away and ready to get things back to normal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Suzie, that none of us signed up for this. And so thank you, thank you for.
Thanks.
All that everyone is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of trustees, any brief comments from our board? Now, we're going to keep things rolling. Okay. Can I recommend just a five minute break? Go grab, refill your water, you know, do what you need to do. So we will reconvene at literally 8:16. We're going to start promptly. All right, thank you. So we will reconvene at literally 8:16. We're going to start promptly. All right. Thank you. Okay, it is 8:16. Do we have anyone back? Hello? Hello? Come back. All right. Yeah, I saw that. I feel everyone's muted but me. It's like there's no one there but me.
I'm here. Hi.
I could, I could sing, but that would be so. All right.
I'm here and I'm not muted.
Yes, I see that. Okay, so moving on. 12 to A, School Business Unaudited Actuels. Financial Report. Debbie.
What is this?
Hey.
Not Erin.
Erin's relieved.
Yeah.
Karen, will you share my presentation? Please.
Is there anything in particular you'd like us to be looking at, Debbie, like the summary or just your presentation, huh?
Um, I think my presentation.
That's the spot. Okay.
It pretty much follows the summary I gave you.
Okay. Okay, good.
Just less detail. Okay. So I'm just starting with the budget cycle, so you can see where we are in the cycle. So we're at the unaudited actuels and the auditors will come and we'll have the actuels at the end of the year. About the same time, we'll be doing the first interim for 2021. So this is the last step for 1920 for, for my office. The books are officially closed now.
And did you have fun, Debbie?
Um, let me think of a different word.
Are you glad you're there?
It was interesting. It was stressful. It was a challenge, but it was, it was fun sometimes, too. I learned a lot.
Good.
Well, I'm very, very happy that you're there.
Thank you.
Doing this.
Agreed.
Karen?
So 2019-20 was an unusual year. So we act, we, we went along like normal through March, presented the first interim, wrote for spring break. The pandemic hit and the district ended site-based instruction. Every aspect of the district's operations were impacted, including the budget. Most discretionary and initiative-based spending came to a halt. This should theoretically help the budget. Karen? At second interim, we projected to finish the year with reserves totaling to 18.34. Due to the changes in spending after March 13th, we finished the year with reserves at 23.16. Reserves are critical as the state's education budget has to be negatively impacted over the next few years. So this is what it looks like. This is the unrestricted general fund. The revenues at second interim, we predicted at 22.4 and they came in at 23. So down at the bottom, it shows you revenues were 2.56% higher and the expenditures were 2.5% lower. Those expenditures are made up of the, the two lines of the salary and benefits and the other expenses. That, that's what we would have expected with the way the pandemic hit and all the spending stopped.
Karen?
Debbie, can you, can, can you attribute that to COVID or partial part of that to COVID?
The expenditures, the revenues.
Well, both. Well, revenue is not, but expenditures.
The revenues was the property taxes.
Right, but expenditures in part to COVID?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
The restricted side, the revenues came in lower. That being that we didn't receive all of our apportionments and we're going to have deferrals moving out on, into 2021. The revenues came in lower, expenditures were much lower. Karen? Other financing sources, this just kind of shows you a quick shot of the transfers in and the transfers out. We had a contribution to the cafeteria fund of 127,000. Food expenses were much higher, but I did take $47,000 of that and use our funds for that to offset the balance of the food with the grab and goes and feeding the community at no cost.
Wow.
So we had no revenue coming in cafeteria from, you know, since February. And then the other big transfer out is to Fund 17. We contributed 513,000 to keep us at 13.33%. These are routine contributions. Our, RM was our, our 3%. And then special education. Special education actually came in less than we had budgeted for, but more than last year. So the contribution was 2.4 million, which is still a very good size contribution. So this is what the combined general fund looks like. So you could see revenue was a little bit higher. Expenditures were still quite a bit lower. Even us with a healthy ending balance. So this is what our reserves look like. And the top half is, is pretty much what we're not spending. The bottom half shows you. I'm sorry, I'm pointing. You're not. The 3% at the 799 is what the, the reserve would be at 3%. Then adding in the two more is 533. And then when we add the 8.3, that's another 2 million. So it's not just that amount. It's those three together is what our reserve is, which brings us to 3.5 million. And what we have in Fund 17 is 6.1. That's what brings us at a, at a percentage of 23.16 in the reserves.
Wow.
In our tentative agreements, we had contingency language. We had two different triggers. One being that we would do a 2% equivalent one-time payment to the units if the property taxes exceeded the 20.6 million or an ending reserve percentage of 20% or higher. We did not make the property taxes, but we were really close. We were short by about 28,000, but we did make the, the 20% or higher in the reserves. Although we didn't make the second trigger, which would have, would have been 25%, we would have had to hit in the reserves. So that, that's going to be going to the unit and that'll be on top of the raise that they were just rewarded.
Excellent. Excellent.
Yay. Yay, yay.
And I love that that's working the way it's supposed to work, that, you know, if.
Trigger, huh?
If we had more than we thought that we had estimated, you know, then the teachers get, get more. And that's exactly the way it's working, which is great.
And so it worked exactly the way it was intended to. So that's great.
Yep.
And, and I pointed out that, that you were integral in figuring out what that number should look like. Am I correct, Debbie?
Um, Chris.
A lot of input into it, yes. We can do that, which is great, and we hit it spot on. That's great.
Yes.
My nice work is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
I'll just say, it was all Debbie.
Oh, we knew that, Chris.
She did a lot on her whiteboard with the calculator.
Yes. So tonight, so the next steps is approving the unaudited actuels. October through November, we'll be working with the auditors. Then we'll be refining the budget. I'll come back to the board before then with our care funds and where, how we're in them. And then in December, I will present the audit report and the first interim report.
Okay. Debbie, you, what does your gut tell you about how much of our additional costs will be covered by the CARES fund?
Quite a bit. We have, we have a very healthy CARES fund. We haven't received it yet. Actually, it's starting to trickle in, but we'll have the figures right here. The CARES funds, our biggest pot is 729,000, which is basically just student-directed. So it's, it's all distance learning, special ed, all of the operations and PPE funds come out of a different pot. So that is, is just basically student-driven.
Wow.
Okay. It's worth noting, though, that we, we really don't know what's going to happen, right? We don't know when we're going to be back in person, how it's going to look, what the costs associated with that will be. So there's so many variables right now that it's hard to say what our costs are going to be for the rest of the year. So it's good that we're in a good position. I'm glad we hit the trigger point. But we do need to, you know, continue to be careful with, with spending, so.
Yeah. Well, and I'm, I'm just, it's, it's good that we're not already panicking over additional costs related to the distance learning, at least for now.
Right. And when I presented the 45-day revise, we shared what the funding was and what our intentions were, but nothing was really planned out all the way yet. So the next presentation will be showing you true figures and where we're at with that.
Great. Excellent.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to comment, too, you know, that reserve fund that we always are so protective of, this is a great example of, you know, the money being there for the rainy day. And it's not just a rainy day. It's a stinking, you know, whatever, right? So I just, I know that there's, there's conversation around that and there's this, you know, why, why so much? Why so high? But this is why. I mean, we, you know, we're, we're, we have a unique funding situation and so we have to be prepared. There's nowhere to turn. We have to turn to ourselves. So again, there's that insight and, and the boards before us, you know, or have been committed to that. So I really appreciate that and really respect that and want to just make that public comment. In addition to that, you know, it's, it's, we were able to, able to come back and have a salary, you know, offer and to be able to offer that trigger. And this is why we do that. This is why we have those funds set aside so that we have a little bit of wiggle room and have the freedom to do some of these things that we want to do, even in the time of a legitimate crisis. So I just want to say that out loud. So, and I thank Debbie, too, for her keen eye, you know, and the ability to, you know, to really tighten the belt when we need to and be, and be really conscious of the decisions that we make. So thank you.
We're very fortunate. We're very fortunate. Talking with my job-alikes.
Yes.
The tricks are much different situations than we are.
Yes, yes. And I just am so appreciative of that, of that thinking that is just so ingrained in this board. And I know that we take some heat for it, but it's for these reasons right now that we're still able to do what we do and provide what we provide and have all of these things and be able to do more and not be just scrambling to just find the penny. So thank you.
Okay. Well put. Um, any questions or other comments before we? And, or do I have a motion to approve the unaudited actuels?
I move to approve the unaudited actuals.
Judy, go ahead. Second by Judy.
Judy got that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No, I do have one question if I may go back.
Oh, yeah.
Back to the raise, and that is the timing on that.
Good question.
Sure, I'm thinking I'm a teacher or classified staff, you know, Michael, when do I get my money? And I'm just curious if there's a, what do you anticipate in, you know, a month, two months?
I'll be working on it in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And another, we mentioned just a reminder that these figures at the end of the year, none of that, the, the raises that happened this year is not reflected in there. It's the actuals from last year. Reminder, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Resolution 2105, establishing revised GAN limits. And that's for last year, 2019, 2020? Yeah. Okay.
Right. This is, well, this is one of the things I learned in closing the books.
Oh.
Uh, part of the procedure is the GAN limit. And if, if we finish with a higher limit than we did last year, we have to have a resolution and present it to the state. And looking back, we have for many, many years had a higher limit. So this resolution is just approving that.
So explain this again in layman's terms, the limit. This is the, the reserve.
This is the GAN limit. So we finished 981,000 higher than the 4. So we just have to put that into a resolution, present that to the state.
Okay.
Got it.
Higher than last year.
And that paperwork is, that's just the, I'm really having a hard time in the schedule of finding the 2105 or on my agenda. Is it buried in here between the actuels?
It's after the actuels and then the GAN limit. I actually took the forms out of the unaudited.
Oh, I see it. I see it. There it is. There we go. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve 2105 for adopting the GAN limit with the amount as Debbie outlined?
So moved.
Okay.
And this is a resolution, Karen?
All right. Trustee Velazquez?
Aye.
Trustee Potmussel?
Aye.
Trustee Roma Flores? Trustee Kiff?
Aye.
And President Del Rey?
Aye.
Perfect.
And then 12, item, agenda item 12 to C, and this is Conflict of Interest Code Resolution 2106.
This is the resolution for the Conflict of Interest Code. This is done every other year before we have an election. We have no change in our Conflict of Interest Code this year. And what this says is, it just says who has to complete the Form 700 each year to make sure there is no conflict of interest between the trustees and their position or the superintendent or actually myself, the Director of Business Services. And that's outlined in the board policy that's attached with it.
Yep. Okay, any questions, concerns, or do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept Resolution 2106, adopting a Conflict of Interest Code.
Second.
Thank you. Karen?
All right. Trustee Velazquez?
Aye.
Trustee Potmussel?
Aye.
Trustee Roma Flores?
Aye.
Trustee Kiff?
Aye.
And President Del Rey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. It was long, but not horribly long. And a lot of really good in-depth information, for sure. Some of it, you know, deferred from.
Some of it, you know, deferred from August. But thank you, thank you, everyone, and thank you for those of you who've stuck around to the end here. Next board meeting, while we have the September 30th tentatively, right, for approving the, the new L cap, which means something different than it used to mean.
An attendance plan, yeah.
Yeah, yes, exactly. Continuity and attendance plan, not local control and accountability plan, just to make it confusing. Okay, thank you, everybody.
I have a really, really quick question. So the keynote speaker from the in-service from the teachers that we were speaking about earlier, is that available somewhere to watch? Did we, have we established that? I think.
Yeah.
Or somebody was.
I have, we, we recorded the Zoom and so I'll share that video with all of you. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Can I also ask you if you would share it with our two incoming board members? I don't know, do we have a way to reach out to them, to Rose and?
Sure.
About, I think, I mean, up to them, but I think it's of value.
Thank you, Donna, that spread out.
We'll be, we'll be reaching out to them soon to kind of do an orientation and give them a binder to get prepared so we can make that part of it.
And Chris, I'm happy to be involved with that as needed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chris, get better and thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks, week and a half.
Yeah.
Sure.
14 days.
Unless I see you walking the dog.